All right, at seven o'clock. Welcome, everybody. We'll call the meeting of letters. Dan is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Is there anybody here who's for the bridge meeting? Here for the... All right, then we'll move into the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our Board of Selectmen meeting of November 4.
Move that we approve the meeting minutes for the November 4th regular meeting?
Second.
Any questions, comments, suggested revisions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Motion carried. Thank you. I don't believe we have any recommended appointments for vacancies. The next item on our agenda is, oh, I put my stuff out of order, Board of Education GOSA contract. Mike, you did a little bit of a cover memo. You want to give us an introduction? And then we'll...
Yes. So in the audience, we have Board of Education Chair person Monica Logan. She has done a summary of the contract that is before you today. It's a little bit different than the traditional Municipal Employee Relations Act contracts that you've received before from me. This one has certain timetables that are collective bargaining for teachers. It's generally called the Teachers Negotiation Act. Connecticut has three collective bargaining laws, one of them covering teachers. The laws are similar to municipal employees and state employees, but they also contain significant differences. The major differences is in the scope of bargaining, in that this particular contract does not include retirement over retirement, does not include issues of retirement, and it also needs to be settled before the local budget submission date. The three laws contain requirements for legislative approval. You may do one of three things tonight or within the next 30 days. You may accept it and approve it. You may not act on it, or you may reject it. If you reject it, there are certain levels of arbitration and mediation that go into play. If you approve it, you're done. If you do know, if you take no action within the next 30 days, it is deemed as if it were approved. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back to you, and you can decide how the body moves forward.
Yeah, Monica, you want to, anything you want to add?
I don't have anything specific to add beyond the memo, but if you have any questions or concerns or anything you'd like to discuss. The process itself was extremely amicable in regard to our administrators. It's obviously a much smaller pool than what we see for our teachers, and it went fairly smoothly. We made some additions. Just one quick thing to clarify, and then I'm happy to take any questions. You'll notice that if you, when you see the percentage increase in the salaries, 1.75 plus 2.25 plus 2.25 does not equal 11.53% in the second paragraph, and I just wanted to provide some reasoning why. So there were some differences in the steps. Some people were moved around in the steps because we have a new Director of People's Services, and that moved from a step from level three to a level five, so that kind of changed the total percentage that you see there. But the total percentage is 11.53 over three years, which is well within, similar to other districts. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for doing this work. For all of our educators, they're just like our municipal employees in a lot of ways. We're always asking them to do more with less, and appreciate everybody who put the effort into getting this contract extension negotiated. Does anybody else have any questions for Monica?
I have, I have one.
Sure.
Just for clarification, on the language that was added about the retired administrators prior to 127, 125?
Correct.
So is that anybody that retires, like, going forward? Or does it grandfather, anybody who may have retired for those two years?
Basically, the retirement provision here, in regard to the medical, everybody that's an administrator now would be grandfathered in, but anyone that's hired going forward will no longer be entitled to those same benefits. Basically, we're grandfathering that provision out of the contract.
Okay.
So it's a cost savings for us.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions. I just want to thank Monica for her work in bringing this to us, and I was wondering if you wanted to introduce your little assistance.
My ad hoc Board of Education members over there have William Peters and Alexander Peters, and I believe Alexander is friends with your grandson.
Oh.
That's good to know.
Say it again. It's what?
Xander is friends with Peggy's grandson. They're both in fourth grade.
Awesome.
So they had to join this evening because Daddy's at another meeting, so.
So what is the pleasure of the board? As Mark outlined, Mark, you've been here longer than I. We've had, you know, three options. We can vote to endorse it. We can do nothing, in which case it won't take effect, or we can reject it and send it through a process. My experience from the Board of Ed side is usually the Board of Selectmen takes no action unless, you know, there's a reason to otherwise, but whatever the board wants, it is your guys' pleasure.
Sometimes in the past, we've taken an affirmative vote on it, indicating our support of the Board of Ed, their negotiating team, and the administrators and their negotiating team.
Yep. Is that what you want to do?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Maybe for the benefit of Mike, who drafted the motion, we can read his motion.
I will. I move that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves as presented the attached Grand B Association of School Administrators Collective Bargaining Labor Agreement dated July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate your support.
She owes you guys a cheeseburger or something. All right. Next item on the agenda is Communications System Agreement. Let me do a brief kickoff of this, and then I'll turn it over to Mike. So obviously, this has appeared on our agenda a number of times. This is the first, I guess it's the second since we approved the acquisition of the property. Official agreement of one of many to bring this project to fruition. I'm going to ask Mike to give a little bit of background here, but my recommendation is tonight, if you go to page two of Mike's memo, he's laid out three potential motions. My suggestion is we table the first two tonight, and we take those up on December 2nd, and I'll explain more in a second. And then the third, we could move forward tonight if people are comfortable with. The third just authorizes myself and Mike to execute the documents and to begin the process to take advantage of the grant that we receive from the state. On the first two, there are two reasons why I think we should, two slash three reasons why we should table this until the second. First is there are some language changes that we are still working on. They're relatively minor, but, you know, there's no reason to rush and not get those incorporated in here. So if we didn't do that, we would have to do it subject to those revisions being made by, you know, Mike and the team. No reason not to just go ahead and include those. The second is, and I apologize because I did not notice this until this morning, but the backup that was available to you all and to the public did not include the exhibits. And the exhibits are important because often, if you read this agreement, we're relying on the language of those exhibits. So I think, you know, giving the public an opportunity to have those and give you guys an opportunity to have them makes some sense. And so given those three things, I think Mike can kind of introduce it tonight. We can get any high-level questions that you have out, and that would be my preference. We can certainly hold all three motions, but if you guys are comfortable with the motion to kind of start the process for executing on the grant, that'd be helpful, too. So go ahead, Mike.
All right. This process started about six and a half years ago, and that was with the creation of the Grand B Radio System Committee. With the exception of Lost Acres Fire Chief John Orr, everyone on the committee has been, I won't say replaced, but moved along, retired, and so forth. So there's a brand-new set of people that have rejoined Chief Orr to move this forward. At the time, based on the committee's work, they determined that the existing radio system that handles our emergency communications was not only obsolete in many ways, but inadequate due to the topography in the general Granby area. So as I mentioned, that assessment and determination spanned over several years, and again, the common denominator, and we're thankful for him, is Lost Acres Fire Chief John Orr, who is leading this project. Along the way, a request for qualifications was issued. That was back in May of '21, and Marcus Communications was engaged to begin a formal assessment of our radio communication system. In May of 2023, a request for proposal was issued. Same type of thing. We took the assessment, reissued it, and sought a company out to buy the equipment from. At the same time, a company called Federal Engineering, and they responded to a separately-issued RFP. And simply because of the sophisticated nature of this equipment, they were hired really to assist the town to sort through the noise and really get the best system for the dollars. After extensive analysis, we put a question before the voters totaling $4.6 million. I think my memo has 4.9, but it was 4.6. And then in April of 2024, the voters favorably approved the allocation of capital monies set aside. Now, continuing on, Marcus, with funding in place, began contract negotiations with the town, and those again were completed by Chief Orr. Our outside attorney with Halloran and Sage, Attorney Joseph Fortner, finished up the negotiations, and the contract that you see before you meets with their approval, minus the exhibits, as Marcus said. Now, subsequent to the work completed on the assessment and the contract, the legislative delegation associated with the town of Granby, as well as the work of some of the Board of Selectmen came forward, and the state awarded us $2 million from the Department of Energy, I'm sorry, the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection to offset a large portion of the 4.6 million. So in order for us to move forward, there were three motions. The first was to allow us to lock in the pricing with Marcus, sign that contract, but we're tabling that tonight. A second is to further extend the Federal Engineering Contract with a not-to-exceed cap, but I believe we're tabling that tonight. But the one we would like to move forward with is I received a package of paperwork from the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, and that will allow us to begin the paperwork, to submit the paperwork, for an administrative plan, a statement of work, and a project budget. That will allow the money to flow back to us as soon as we have the contract in place and start to expend money for it. So that's the state of where we are. As I mentioned in previous reports, we have moved forward with the 824 hearing, and we got permission from the board to move forward on the acquisition of 229 Mountain Road. We also have the utility vehicle, which is in place, and this is the bulk of the contract that will allow that $4.6 million vision that was placed in front of the voters in April to become a reality. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mike. I'm going to start down in this end. Does anybody have any preliminary questions about the contract? Anything additional you want to see before we bring it back on the second, besides the exhibits?
Nothing additional for me. Thank you.
Are we still on track budget-wise on this project?
We are immediately under tremendous pressure. That means at the moment, we are on track for 4.6 million, but the chief has already identified about $100,000 to $120,000 of things, like a second radio channel, so that there's not cross-communications. We are seeing pressure on the overall cost. We are relieved that we have 2 million more from the state. When I say there's pressure, the 4.6 million might be 4.7, might be 4.8, but as a separate discussion unrelated to the Marcus contract, we'll come back and determine, what did we promise the voters? You know, what was the 4.6? Is this an overrun related to what we promised, or is this an additional on top of what we had promised the voters? So thank you for the question. We are immediately under pressure based on rising costs.
So also, page three has the total contract cost for this portion of it. That number includes things that we may not need to move forward on. So we will, we'll be putting this forward to you, with this portion of the contracts sort of being the worst-case scenario, but we're going to be working down, our goal would be to work down from that number in this component of it. But that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with, and want to make sure the language is clear that we can do that, that if we end up with a project that we think we can do for 3.5, we can do it for 3.5. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope.
And are you thinking that the pressure is over and above what we put in for contingency? Because I remember we had conversation with the chief around that.
Yeah, we have approximately $400,000 in contingency, and we are at about 4.7 million in total. So yes, we have eaten through the contingency, and there's a little bit more pressure beyond that. But again, we want to, so there's a couple of schools of thought going on. We do this type of capital improvement, which is a big deal, and there are many police officers, firefighters, ambulance, residents. Their safety is at stake. We want to do this right. I don't believe there's any fluff in terms of what we need. There are bona fide things that we have to go, should we pay $20,000 for a second channel? Is that worth it? I certainly defer to Chief Orr. I think the answer is yes, in which case we want to come back to the Board of Selectmen. We want to deliver everything we promised to the citizens, as well as to be transparent with the board. We want to get the best system, even if that means there's pressure on the original budget. And again, I'm not seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I am seeing $100,000 to $150,000 of pressure over and above the 4.6 right now. We still have only a budget number for the road to get power up there. I suspect that will be under pressure, too, because there's quite a bit of rock up there on the mountain. We paid a little bit more for the property, not a heck of a lot more, but just a little bit more, and we paid just a little bit more for the UTV. So those are the things that continue to put pressure on it. And again, being totally transparent, we want to make the best long-term decisions because we don't do this awful.
And at what point do we have, do we have to go back to the, to the town to have them vote?
It depends how we decide. Of course, nothing needs to be done if we skinny the number down.
Right.
But if we find that the best path forward is to spend a little bit more, I'll present funding solutions to you, and each one will probably be a different path with respect to letting the voters know what we're doing.
Okay. Thanks.
No, I mean, just, it's been a long process and long overdue for updates, so I don't think, I understand the pressure, but I don't think you want to short it, you know?
Absolutely.
Exactly. And some of these, some of these items in here, this is again why we're, I think, a couple extra weeks to make sure we know what we're getting into here. And you guys remember, part of, some of the budget items that the taxpayers approved were actually really more operating costs. We were prepaying certain operating costs in terms of warranty and those kind of things, and replacements and so on and so forth. So there's their weight, we'll, we will make sure we stay on top of it, but this will be the next step to move through that. All right. So, Mike, will you just make a note to get the exhibits out and maybe, maybe get Kathy to amend the agenda so that the attachments at the public would have access to graduate rates as well?
Yes.
And if anybody, I would ask, actually ask everybody to spend, because we're going to get into the, you know, Thanksgiving holidays and stuff like that. As soon as we get the exhibits, do you really drill into them? And if you have questions, let's get into Mike ahead of time, before the December 2nd. And then is everybody comfortable with going forward with the third motion that's in our agenda, though, which is to start the grant documentation process? Or do you want to wait until you have an agreement in place?
I don't see any reason to wait.
Yeah, I'm in favor of starting our paperwork with the state. Could take a while.
All right. So I would accept the motion that's listed as motion number three on page two.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen, direct first selectman, Mark Fiorentino, by this resolution to execute any and all paperwork related to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Municipality Grant Program, notice of Granby's awarding total 2 million, and to make all required filing and reporting associated with the grant, including but not limited to the following: the administration plan, the grantee point of contract form, statement of work, and project budget.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consideration of a tax appeal settlement for the Bay Grape matter. Mike, very good memo explaining what the issue is. Want to add anything to your memo?
Yeah, I'll just say that every five years, the town completes a state-mandated revaluation. In this particular case, as part of revaluation, a company called Bay Grape, they are located at 350 Salmon Brook Street, and it's a nursing home. They had a fair market value of $5.2 million, and through negotiations and subject to a trial that we both would like to avoid, they would like to settle at $4.9 million. When you turn that into an assessment, that's 3.6 million, which is 70% of the $5,152. We moved it down to 4.9 million. That's a settlement or an assessed value of $3,430, or a reduction of $176,890. When you apply that to the mill rate in year one of revaluation, it's a tax reduction on an annual basis of $5,641, and then for the current year, $5,860. We don't have mill rates determined for the coming three years, but I estimate they'll be anywhere from about $6,000 to about $6350. In total, over the five years, that's a $30,000 reduction. And the motion that the board will hopefully pass is based on our attorney, Mike Collins, also of Halloran and Sage, who negotiated the settlement with Bay Grape. And a shout-out goes to our assessor, town assessor Sue Altiere, who also had a hand in it. It basically directs Sue to create a certificate of correction, moving the assessed value down to the $3,430,000, the reduction in $176,890. For the two years underway, which represents a little bit more of an $11,000, she will apply the certificate of correction to the second installment of their current year tax amount, and that is consistent with the settlement agreement that's attached. We basically then will set the assessment on future years at the lower amount, and the grant list will be fine. They will be made whole. We will abide by the hearing, but because that is a settlement, it must come to the board for approval. That's why it's before you tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments?
No, it's a pretty complete memo, so yeah, nothing for me.
So rebalance every 10 years, right?
Five.
It's five?
Yep.
No, I'm good, then.
Yeah, I'd have two comments. One, the amount of tax we're talking about, we would eat up an attorney's face pretty quickly, so it seems like a pretty reasonable settlement to me. And also, when your attorney tells you that the judge has suggested that you settle the case, probably a good idea to settle. Which our memo, if you read it carefully, is our attorney's advice, so.
I'm okay with this.
I'm glad that we were able to keep the town assessor involved in this process, and that she's in agreement, too, on the outcome of this agreement.
All right, before I call for a motion, Mike, I just had one of it. So does this resolve all the, all of the cases that were filed? The other ones kind of resolved, right?
I am only aware that this was the single outstanding case, which is somewhat unique related to, I know Granby certainly has a smaller number of properties, but coming from the community that I had, we normally had 125 to 150 of these, and we were only five times larger. So that gives you some sense of the good work and the stable property values that are here in Granby.
Yeah, if my recollection is correct, I think we had initially three or four appeals filed. I think all the other ones withdrew their appeals, so I heard the change.
There's, there was a change in state law last year, and for, so there used to be a handful of law firms that would, on a percentage of savings basis, would throw spaghetti at the wall and see what stuck. Now you have to go in there with an appraisal. You just can't say, let's see what we can get. And that has very much slowed down the market of law firms challenging Connecticut assessments. I think that's a good thing.
Yep. All right. If there's no other questions or concerns, I'd accept the motion that's shown in our backup.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the settlement between Bay Grape Associates LLC and the town of Granby by reducing the fair market value of the real estate parcel located at 350 Salmon Brook Street from $5,152,700 to $4,900,000, having an assessed value of 70% or $3,430,000, resulting in a decrease to the assessment of $176,890 for the grant list dates beginning October 1st, 2022, and continuing annually through October 1st, 2026. And to further direct the town assessor to process a certificate of correction for the October 1, 2022, and 2023 grant list dates, and working with the tax collector, reduce the second installment of the Bay Grape tax bill due by January 31st, 2025, to reflect this reduction in tax due to the town of Granby. If you have any questions on the aforementioned, oh, that's from...
I didn't have no space. I have to do the same thing.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is, it turns out we hold an interest in a cemetery in Southfield.
Mr. Chairman, we were contacted by the town of Southfield, who was contacted by a group called the Mountain Burial and Ground Association. And essentially, through Southfield's request, we would be surrendering this small parcel, which we call an ancient burial ground in Southfield. And before we can do that, we need a referral. If indeed the Board of Selectmen was in agreement that in order to better maintain the property, we should surrender it to the Mountain Burial and Ground Association, we would first have to go through an 824 hearing, much like we did for 87 Sims Berry Road and 229 Mountain Road. The planning and zoning would report back that it was consistent with our plan of conservation and development, and then a second motion to basically surrender it would be in order. We've run this by our Corporation Counsel, Rich Roberts, and he concurs because it's a surrender, there would be no town meeting required, and if the Board of Selectmen were in agreement, there's no adverse consequences that we're aware of.
So to be clear, we're just being asked tonight to refer to our planning and zoning commission?
That's correct.
Anybody have any objection to that?
Nope.
No.
Do we know what the size of the parcel is?
Sure looks like two acres.
I'm not good at estimating.
About two acres.
Oh, okay. Do we need a motion?
Yes, we would, we would have a motion to refer this to the planning and zoning commission. I think it's on the second page there.
Yep. I'll move that the Board of Selectmen refer this matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen refer this matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration under CGS 8-24.
Second. Kelly's the second.
We'll give that second to Kelly.
It's hard to draw any people.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Pagan Way Mike.
A few highlights. This is the particular manager's report that highlights the projects, and I won't read everything on the commentary, but just a few highlights for those that are watching. We continue to plan for the 11/19, that is tomorrow, starting at 2:00 p.m., the Connecticut Siting Council hearing on the KCE Battery Project, from 2:00 to as long as 6:30. That will be for the expert witnesses on KCE to present why they think this is a good site. Once that closes, the town steps up and we present our experts. Mark Gottlieb, John Oates, and Kate Bednas are our experts. Mark Fiorentino, our First Selectman, will also testify. I don't know when in the afternoon that will be, other than their side starts at 2:00 p.m. The hearing will be concluded perhaps at 6:30, or maybe a little bit earlier to allow the public to weigh in. We encourage anybody in the public who wants to weigh in to check our town website or the Connecticut Siting Council website for the team's link, so that you can either monitor the hearings or weigh in on them. Salmon Brook Park Walking Trail, we've set a community walk for Saturday, 11:30 at 9:30 a.m., meaning November 30th at 9:30 a.m. We'll be pushing some information out through Facebook and social media and the website, but we welcome everybody to take a walk around that one and a quarter mile oval. The fiscal year '26 budget meetings have begun, and a status memo will be sent, sometimes called the plus-one memo, will be sent to the Board of Selectmen for your first meeting in December, so you have an idea what we're seeing. We've issued two RFPs, one for the park infrastructure review, and a second for a library capital campaign consultant. If you recall, you placed that funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Act at the last meeting, and we have to act fairly quickly on it, since we have to have it obligated by December 31st. Working with the Commission on Aging, as well as the First Selectmen, we held a total of four Kern's Senior Housing Meetings. We'll move to formal interviews in December, and at some point in time, we will come before the Board of Selectmen asking for your support as we seek to negotiate with one preferred developer. We worked with the Board of Ed and Lockton Diesel Gasoline and Heating Oil Prices for 2025. Those are down a bit from last year, which is good, and simply due to the global, the possibility of global unrest, we decided, let's take a reduction as opposed to wait a little longer to see if they drop further. We coordinated the action of the Board of Selectmen to reactivate the CPAC Committee, and that first meeting will be December 2nd at 5:00 p.m. And Mark just gave me the agenda, so we will push that out in short order. Couple of meeting minutes and notes. As we had mentioned earlier in the meeting, there is a bridge meeting down the hall that is on Route 189. It will be closed for quite a while, and the detour is expensive. So if anybody wants to weigh in on that proposal, they can do so online or in person. There is a, continues to be a red flag warning. We, just about all of the State of Connecticut, if not entire New England, is a fire danger, considerable fire danger. So we have a red flag warning out there reminding everybody, no fires, no anything. Hopefully, we'll get about an inch of rain on Thursday that'll help mitigate it, but it won't completely solve it. I took a call on Friday from a concerned resident, given the situation of the drought, and I simply reaffirmed that the Town of Granby, like many of the other municipalities, has an emergency management office. And while we, while there's no way we can possibly drill on every contingency, we do have plans in the event that their people's well would run dry. We have a responsibility to truck in water. We would work with Aquarion and Salmon Brook Water. We would possibly lean on our friends at MDC, which have exceptionally deep reservoirs in Barhamston. But what I reassure the resident is, we sit on one of the largest aquifers in New England. So if anybody is having problems with wells, while we can't fix the well, not necessarily something that's in government's power, we would still like to know about it, so we can prepare an appropriate response. And I'm heading down to Glastonbury, probably in the next two to three weeks. The annual meeting of Region 3, which is the region that Granby is in, where we practice drills like this, will be held, and I'll ask some of the other towns, what exactly are they doing in the event this drought continues on? But I think more importantly, given that we have climate change, if we dodge it this year, you know, after some significant rain or maybe a snowy winter, we'll probably be facing this somewhere down the road. So it's probably not a bad thing to spend a little bit of time and plan for exactly what happens in the event that we have a continuous drought. And finally, I just wanted to share, we had a veterans event today. The Lieutenant Governor came down from Hartford, and there were approximately 75 Vietnam-era veterans at the high school with their families. They numbered about 175. Each one was recommend, was recognized for their service in the Vietnam War, and the Lieutenant Governor had five or six different veterans from different branches that came forward to the microphone and spoke a little bit about their service and shared with those in the audience and those of us who were there, some poignant stories. So our hats go off to all the veterans, our hats go off especially to the Granby veterans, and every once in a while, when you attend one of those, you remember how great a place the United States and Granby in particular is. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you. I'll take a highlight on the financial. You or Kimmy go to highlight on the financial portion of the report?
I do. I'll turn it over to Kimmy in one second, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to draw everybody's attention to the ARPA report, which is the last page, the budget financials, which are the preceding pages. We have the usual press air from overtime and Public Works and Police, but the thing I want to draw everybody's attention to on the ARPA report is, over to the right-hand side, there's a whole lot of zeros in there. And that means we've successfully crossed those items off of our to-do list. There were a total of 27 new items in Phase 2, and except for the items on the bottom, all of those have been checked off. So we still have a lot of work. We have a payment to make on the walking trail, that's been obligated, so we're fine. We have some improvements at the PD waiting, Holcombe Farm, we have some concrete work going over there in the crosswalk. We've signed a contract with the Town Center Consultant. We hope to sign a contract for the Park and Rec Study, and we have wastewater facilities plan a contract ready to sign. Capital Campaign Consultant, we hope we get a bidder and we can sign a contract there. And then finally, the animal shelter, Betsy Kirk, and everybody involved from Public Works is doing a great job there. But the preponderance of zeros there is a great sign, we're obligating and spending the money you directed us to. So I just wanted to point that out and give a shout out to everybody who's working double duty. People look at me strange when I say, spending money in government's a hard thing, because there are protocols, there are purchasing rules, there are contracts, and to get this stuff moving takes a whole concerted effort. So I just wanted to, for those people involved, to shout out that they're doing great work.
Kimmy, you have anything to add?
I have one thing to add. After I did the ARPA report, I got the information that the senior center allocation should be $100,000 instead of $25,000, so I will replant that in the next ARPA report. And for the budget operation, we got the first installment for the education course during in October, which is 25% of the total grant, which is close to, I think, we have $2,000 off of our budget amount. And I don't have anything else to add, so I will take questions at this time.
Any questions?
Nope.
No.
So I have two things. I just want to echo that, Mike. This is, we, in my opinion, thanks to your leadership and Kimmy's leadership and everybody who's worked on this, we've done a tremendous job with this ARPA, not only making sure we met the deadlines and balanced out, spending exactly every penny, but no, not a penny more. We've done a lot of great work that we would otherwise not have gotten to in Granby, a lot, and improvements in a lot of different systems, so. And then my only question would be, so the change that Kimmy mentioned in the senior center, that's a significant change, and did we just report it wrong?
No. So the goal of the senior center was always to create a second satellite public venue for meetings, where we have the ability to do Teams or Zoom, where we have microphones, where we have equipment that Mark or somebody can run, and we have to move a couple of oil tanks out of the way to get that all done. So the racking, the oil tank removal, four cameras that can be remotely controlled, microphones, the whole nine yards approaches, the original thought was around 25, it is closer to 100. So Kimmy is pulling that out of the, call it the wash bucket that is affectionately called roads, so that on the days, which are frequent, especially now with early voting, the Public Works people don't have to come in, tear it down, have a meeting, set it up, and do that 14 times, you know, over the course of the election cycle. So it does seem like a lot of money, but you're getting updated electronics to duplicate the ability to have meetings in a secondary location.
Which I'm very, very supportive of, and I think we need it. I smile, because the other good news is that the cost to remove the oil tanks is buried in the capital plan somewhere, so we found some relief in the capital plan. Because, so they're finally getting the oil tanks removed.
They are.
That's excellent work. All right. Any other questions? Good work, everybody. I will move on to the First Selectmen Report. I'll go quick, as Mike mentioned a lot of the stuff, and I honestly don't remember if I've done this, but even if I did, as we're saying again, I want to give a shout out to everybody who worked on Election Day, and Scott's team, and Laura and Paul's team, and Mark was one of our moderators. We did a tremendous job in Granby. We had an 86% turnout. I was there the whole day. I worked one early voting day, and I was there the whole day. You know, the workers worked largely without pay. They worked for cookies, really, honestly. They worked eight, 10, 12-hour shifts. They come from a variety of different political persuasions and backgrounds, and without exception. Everybody put the integrity of our election day above all of that. They treated each other with kindness and respect, and there was a lot of, you know, just it was a very, very good atmosphere. And I watched how it radiated outwards from there, because I can tell you with almost no exception, in a, you know, a stressful election for all of us, the voters were exactly the same way. Everybody was kind to each other, they were respectful. We had some issues that had to be resolved, we always do, but because of the large turnout, you know, the number of, you know, issues to make sure people were properly registered was a little bit more, people just did a wonderful, wonderful job. We could not have that kind of turnout and that kind of results. We couldn't afford to do it without all of those folks dedicating their time. So I really, really am very grateful. And if we needed a starting point in Granby of what we could rally around that none of us could disagree with, that's it right there. Nobody could disagree with the way we handle our elections. I'm very proud of our workers, they should be proud of themselves. The veterans ceremony was wonderful. I do want to thank again, I thanked in person the Lieutenant Governor and Commissioner Welsh, and Mike, and Jennifer Calvassa from the senior center, who is our municipal agent on Veterans Affairs.
Mark, also Scott Nolan played a huge role in getting all that correspondence out.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. It really was a very deep ceremony. And also the American Legion Post, our local post 182, you know, a lot of the background work in helping getting those names out, so great, great effort. Mike mentioned the walking path, I want to mention it to you all again. I'm hoping actually that besides a walk, we do like a little ribbon-cutting ceremony, something like that, that day, so I hope if you guys can get it on your calendar, I hope you can. And then Mike also mentioned the battery project. We are, we are prepared. We are doing exactly what I promised you would do. I don't know, as Mike said, based on what our council is telling us, I don't even know if our side will get hurt tomorrow, but we will get hurt. I'll just schedule a second evidentiary hearing. So anybody in the audience who is still wanting to comment on that project, you can go to the town website, you can click on a link for the 6:30 public comment. Just I have to remind everybody that under their rules, you have to email them in advance that you want to testify, so that they know that you're, they can authenticate you when it's time to call on you in the meeting. So, so far, very grateful and proud of the work we're doing. I think, as we mentioned, again, only in Granby, two of our three experts are not charging us a dime. They're doing, providing the service pro bono to the town, so. A lot of work to do, but a big day tomorrow, so. All right, I think that's all I had. Mark?
Along the lines of the voting, as it turned out, one of the races in town in the second district was so close overall, one half of 1%, we had to do a recount. Scott was there, along with the volunteers, and we did a Sunday afternoon recount of our votes to make sure that Granby's total was accurate and complete.
And I'm hoping you're here to report that it was accurate and complete?
It is now accurate, yes.
Anything else?
No.
Peggy?
Yesterday, the Police Department and the Social Services Department held a fill the cruiser event at Stop and Shop. It was yesterday. And I was there at the very beginning of it, and it looked like they were well on their way to filling the cruiser, so nice job.
Yeah, and I was going to bring up the same thing. I went a little later in the day, and they were getting pretty packed, so it was great to see so many people from the community come out and donate.
Nothing for me.
Oh, good. Oh, that's a cool picture. Share your best image.
All right, so just real quick, building on the theme of Veterans Day, I'm not sure if this was noted last week, but we did have each grade be spoken to by a group of four or five veterans, which was very interesting, especially as a senior, just seeing the careers. For the National Honor Society, they're already looking forward to the Turkey Trot, where they raise money during our advisory for local charities to help with people getting a proper Thanksgiving, so they can actually fully enjoy it. Student Government, we're also running a Powderpuff Football Game, so that means the junior girls and junior and senior girls are going to be playing a football game right before Thanksgiving, which is going to be very exciting. I will note very proudly that the seniors have a much better turnout, and I think we're going to absolutely smoke the juniors. The, for the languages, for people in the upper language classes, we are going to Boston to see the Museum of Art in Boston in, on this Wednesday, which is very exciting. And then sports are really coming to an end with a lot of our seasons all over. Field hockey was over. They unfortunately went out in the second round to, in, a shootout. Girls' soccer went out in the second round. Boys' soccer, we went out in the semifinals in penalty kicks. And volleyball, they actually made it all the way to the final. I watched the match, it was very hard, but they very well fought. They had, ended a great season as runners-up for Class M for volleyball. And so the one remaining team is football, that still has to finish their season with, I believe, their last game, which will be on Friday home. So all the, a lot of heartbreak, having the season's end, especially, but a lot of great seasons that have come to completion.
So just a question on the football team, this regular season ends Friday, right? They haven't even started?
They haven't even started the postseason.
But they'll qualify, right?
They already are.
Yeah. That's awesome. Thank you. Any questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the public session portion of our agenda. Yes? We need to set the timer. Is there any risk that you will talk more than five minutes?
No, no risk. No risk, Mark. I'll keep it to five. Hi, guys. My name's Jim Sipski. I live on Stonewall Drive. My topic is, is considering the permanent preservation of Holcombe Farm. The farm itself, the, the acreage that was not preserved two years ago, and the preservation of substantial acreage two years ago was, was fantastic. But that's the woodlands, the trails, et cetera. But the actual farm is not, not preserved. So my ask is that we initiate a dialogue with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture regarding their preservation agriculture easement program. That program has existed since 1979, and over 45 years has preserved about 50,000 acres. In current day, and actually this year, the state will pay up to $20,000 per acre for the agricultural easement. This year, 23 properties were preserved, totaling 1,580 acres. Based on discussion I've had with Jamie Smith, who, with the Department of Agriculture who leads that program, there are town-owned farms included in that. Our acreage, our property, would qualify for this payment. And to bracket some math around this, obviously, you'd have to go to a process to figure this out. Would you get $20,000 an acre? That would be based on an appraisal process. But to go through the process and sort of bracket this, I think we had about 35 acres of the farm that are not preserved. Clearly, I think you'd break out the event barn and the parking lot and the farmhouse. So let's say we preserve 25 acres. Let's say you tossed in the five acres of the former church property. So you preserve 25 to 30 acres. If you maxed out the easement, the agricultural easement payment from the state, that would be $500,000 to $600,000. So you have a 20-year lease on the farm today. The farm is beloved by me. It's beloved by everyone. It is an integral part of the, the community. A 500 CSA share farm is so unique. 25% of the crop, as you know, goes to fresh access, which is about 30,000 pounds, is going to seven local charities. So tremendous asset to the town. I believe the current lease was extended from 15 years to 20 years. So already, the town has a long-term, is, was the property owner, has a long-term relationship with the farm. The farm is running very stably in Joe's 11th year as the farmer, and I guess the 31st year, I believe, of Friends of Holcombe Farm. So with all that stability and permanence, I ask the question and say, hey, let's spend an hour talking to the Department of Agriculture. And again, we can bracket this. If, if you received $10,000 an acre, okay, you'd be looking, the town would be looking at a payment of $250,000 to $300,000. If you were at the high end of the assessment of 20,000 per acre, it would be a $500,000 to $600,000 payment on top of what you've, which you wouldn't have today. You know, today, you've got a stable farm, an excellent crew, an excellent farmer, but in the future, you could have an additional, let's call it half a million dollars, potentially. Permanence would then also give the farm, I think, the ability to really thrive further. I'm not here speaking for the Friends of Holcombe Farm. I'm speaking here as Jim Sipski. But if we think about it, with permanence, any of the significant projects that they want to take on, potentially, and if they want to look at fundraising, with permanence, I think you'd get out of a sort of year-to-year, have we made the budget for this year, to begin to consider things such as endowments. So I, obviously, I want to just pause and say, I can't even raise this issue if I didn't stop and, as a fairly short-term resident, didn't give thanks to all the volunteers over decades and decades that saved the place and have it operating well today. I mean, I volunteer at the farm, but it's, it's those decades of volunteers that have made it what it is today. But with permanence, I think the town would benefit financially. And then going forward, you would give the farm a much more solid foundation to thrive in the future. Within all that, you remember, Connecticut is the fourth most densely populated state in the country. New Jersey, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut. And although we have an abundance of fresh produce in our town, only 12% of the fruits and vegetables consumed in New England are actually grown in New England. The percentage is still incredibly small. So give it that permanent foundation, allow it to be part of a, a permanent part of a resilient food system locally. So, thank you. Again, the ask is, invest an hour. I'd be glad to participate in it with, again, Jamie Smith, who leads the program for the Department of Agriculture, and take a look at the process. The process would initially just start with a dialogue, and would start with pro forma documentation. But any agricultural easement would be customized to the property. Like I said, they did 23 this year. They're all, 23 are slightly different because they need to meet the needs of the, that actual farm and circumstance. So, thank you, and be glad to, can't say I'm a full expert on this entire process, but be glad to take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions?
Very informative.
All right. Anybody else? Not, I will close the public session. I will say, Jim, I actually appreciate that, and if you were here for the, the background, I apologize. I think, well, I'll ask Mike to add it. We talk regularly, obviously, with the Friends of Holcombe Farm.
Yep.
And we'll add that to our agenda to discuss whether they've looked at that recently. I will tell you, we talked about it extensively a couple of years ago when we negotiated the deal that, where we are today. And it was the same balance that we're going to look, we're going to find, I think, if we look at it again. I'd say we shouldn't look at it again, but it's the same, really the same issues, is that that monetary payment is a one-time payment, and you got to make, you know, you're going to get it. But I have talked to, and others have talked to, folks who have not had great luck with the agricultural easement program with the state, because they end up 20 years later with the state controlling what can and cannot be done there. And so, and a lot of it, it wasn't anybody's fault. It's just they didn't understand, nobody had the foresight to try to predict 20 years later. So if we end up with a document that looks good today, but 20 years from now was something we didn't think of, we've lost control over what that, what that easement says and what we can and can't do. So when we looked at it a couple of years ago, we collectively, because we had other community partners, the Friends, the Land Trust, and the town, decided to lean on the side of caution for now, because the system's working for all practical purposes. We've preserved it for the next 20 years, and it's being managed by our partner. But we will add it to the list, and now's a good time to make sure it's on the Friends' radar if it's something that they want us, because we're going to be going through that analysis of the church.
With that, if I may, I spoke in these.
Come back to the microphone. I should, I always regret when I try to answer the questions, because we really shouldn't have a bunch of back and forth.
I appreciate your comments, Mark. And I guess I'm, I'm not here to speak for anyone else, but I did have a very lengthy discussion on this topic with Jenny, and also with a number of board members. So I'm not going to try to put words in Jenny's mouth, but her sentiment was, please, go and have this discussion. I think she would be delighted if the farm was permanently preserved again, because it would open up the ability to, to, to do truly long-term planning for the farm. But she welcomed it. She says, look, I'm, you know, the Friends are the tenant. They are not the landowner. So this, this is a question for the landowner, the town, was, was really. But again, I want to be really cautious. I'm not trying to put words in Jenny's mouth, but no, we, we talked about it at length, and she would not put a stop to it, I don't believe, but.
Right. Understood. All right.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll make sure that's on our agenda and continue to keep it on our radar screen somewhere. All right. Anything else? If not, I don't, we don't have a need for an executive session.
Right. We do not.
Then I would accept the motion to adjourn. Before, before I get that motion, we are trying to get our work done on the second hold promises, so that we would not need our second meeting in December. So, why are you looking at me like that? We are trying. All right. I'll set the motion to adjourn, but unless there's an objection to us trying to get our work done by December 2nd, just to head to the.
Yes.
All right.
Move it away, Jim.
Peggy?
Second to motion.
Officer, the motion. Mr. Newman? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.